All right, good evening. Welcome to the December fourteenth meeting of the Myriad Planning Commission. We will now call this hearing at six P M. Madam Secretary, would you please call roll for determination of quorum?
Commissioner Harlan.
Here.
Commissioner King.
Here.
Commissioner Lavelle.
Here.
Vice Chair Fisher.
Here.
Chair La Paglia.
Here.
Let the record reflect all members are present.
Thank you. At this time, Commissioner Harlan, would you please lead us in pledge of allegiance?
Please rise. Right hands over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now be moving on to the approval of the agenda. Madam Secretary, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
Seeing none.
Thank you, and I'd like to call for a motion and second to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll make a motion, Lavelle.
Harlan to second.
We have a motion and a second, thank you. Madam Secretary, please do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Harlan.
Yes.
Commissioner King.
Aye.
Commissioner Lavelle.
Aye.
Vice Chair Fisher.
Aye.
Chair La Paglia.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. At this time, we will take public comments. Any person may address the Planning Commission on any subject pertaining to city business which does not relate to any item listed on tonight's agenda. Normally, no action may be considered or taken by the Planning Commission on any matter not listed on the agenda. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. And Madam Secretary, do we have any non-agenda public comment tonight?
Seeing none.
Thank you. Moving on to the approval of minutes. Let's see, last time we were up here, approval of minutes of the October twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-two Regular Planning Commission meeting as presented. Madam Secretary, are there any members of the public requesting to speak?
Seeing none.
Thank you. At this time, a call to the Commission for a motion and a second to approve the minutes from October twenty-sixth.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of October twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-two.
I'll second.
Thank you. Now, we have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, please do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Harlan.
Aye.
Commissioner King.
Aye.
Commissioner Lavelle.
Aye.
Vice Chair Fisher.
Aye.
Chair La Paglia.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Tonight, we have an action item. Public testimony for the public hearing has been received and closed. So the action tonight is to approve resolution for Development Plan two zero one nine dash one eight four six, conditional use permit two zero one nine one eight four seven, and minor conditional use permit two zero one nine dash one eight five six for the convenience store and drive-through gas station, excuse me, convenient, for the convenience store with a drive-through car wash, gas station, drive-through car wash, excuse me, A B C, outdoor and display of sales. With that, staff, maybe have the staff report.
Absolutely. Good evening, Chair La Paglia, Vice Chair Fisher, and distinguished members of the Planning Commission. If we could pull up the PowerPoint. So, as you mentioned in your opening, this is an action item tonight. And on October twelfth, the Planning Commission held a hearing for the project and voted to continue the hearing to October twenty-sixth. On October twenty-sixth, the Planning Commission closed the public hearing and directed staff to prepare findings and return this evening, December fourteenth. Tonight's item is an action item resulting from October twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-two Planning Commission meeting. In this Planning Commission meeting, staff was directed to prepare findings for approval of the development plan consisting of the convenience store with limited hours and a fueling station with a canopy, and to deny conditional use permit and minor conditional use permit consisting of a car wash use, alcohol sales use, and propane outdoor display and sales use. Those are all uses that were denied. So as a result, the staff report contains the prepared findings for the Planning Commission's consideration, and it is staff's recommendation to adopt notice of exemption pursuant to SEQA, adopt a resolution of the Planning Commission approving Development Plan two thousand and nineteen eighteen forty-six with limited operating hours, denying conditional use permit two thousand and nineteen eighteen forty-seven, and minor conditional use permit two thousand and nineteen eighteen fifty-six based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval in Exhibit A where the operating hours are stated. That concludes the presentation.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the commissioners to Mr. Renamaki? Check hands, no?
I do.
Oh, Commissioner Fisher, Vice Chair Fisher.
When I was going through the conditions of approval that came with the meeting agenda, I wanted to understand a couple of areas. On the rooftop of the buildings, will they'll be screened, but will residents be looking at air conditioning units and the tops of roofs in any, in any condition at all, any of the residents?
No, there won't be any rooftop equipment visible. The parapet will be screening the rooftop equipment from the street level, and the homes that are adjacent or surrounding the property are all below the grade of the subject site. So there, there would be no equipment visible at all.
Under point eighteen, in, in that particular point, there is the verbiage car wash, which I think needed to be deleted. Number twenty-five, there is a new trash compliance regulation coming on board. Is this cover that new trash regulation for the business?
The trash enclosure was designed to meet the, the waste management requirements and state refuse and recycle requirements as they exist today. For future uses, they would have to, you know, revise the trash enclosure if needed to accommodate additional area that might be for food.
And Vice Chair, when the building plans are submitted, which is well after a project is approved, staff analyze those building plans to ensure that there's conformance with current state law. So yes, there's two assembly bills that tie into organics and other regulations. We make sure that the sizing is appropriate for the number of containers that are necessary for the project. So staff does double-check state law conformance with the building plan set review.
So it doesn't have to be written into the conditions of approval here that we're looking at?
Yeah, a lot of times it's, the applicant shall be consistent with all building code and fire code. We, we use an umbrella, but our staff are trained to identify the specific code changes, and we have quite a few coming in the new year.
And under point twenty-nine, this project is still considered to be a one-phase project, not done in any other phases?
Correct, it is one phase only. All construction will occur at once to the completion of the project.
And point forty-seven, under the conditions of approval, states the hours of operation shall be limited to five A M. to ten P M. Monday through Sunday. And I thought that we had requested it to be later than five A M.
So at the October twenty-six Planning Commission meeting, there was discussion about the operating hours as it relates to twenty-four hours a day. And the Planning Commission identified that they didn't find the twenty-four hours to be appropriate, given the proximity. And the commercial standards were noise. And they directed staff to review the operating hours and come up with our determination of what we thought was best for the area. And those are the hours that we worked on and provided in the conditions of approval.
And Vice Chair Fisher.
I'm just concerned about the five A M.
Yeah, and Vice Chair Fisher, we were asked to come back with what our analysis showed was the typical hours. And when you look at a fuel canopy with a convenience store, the breakfast crowd is really some of their bread and butter, so folks that are gassing up and getting a donut at five, five-thirty, six A M. That's technically the kind of crowd that they're pursuing in the morning. And so that's why we were looking at an earlier opening, but of course, not a later closing, because we felt that the, the ten P M. closing was appropriate. But when we looked at seven A M. or eight A M., we felt that that was too late in the morning, because most people are already at work by that time. So that, that was really, that was the consumer type of traffic, the, the folks getting to the freeway and trying to grab a donut or coffee while they gas up. So that was what staffs was looking at.
On point number sixty-nine, they're considering replacing the square tree planters at the sidewalk locations to diamond tree planters. What's the reason for that?
It's probably.
Is it because of conflicts with pedestrian path of travel?
I'm just thinking in my mind, the design, the site, site design layout, and it is most likely, just as you said, due to the accommodation of the sidewalk as it's laid out and how the diamond planters would fit in better, allowing for free clearance of pedestrian pathway while providing the trees at the same time. Space saver.
And I'm understanding that because of the design and the right-of-ways that are going to happen, that the right-of-way is going to be enlarged, or the street is going to be enlarged?
That is correct.
Can you clarify that for me on point number ninety-seven?
Yes, so Clinton Keith Road, as it exists today, will be widened. There will be one additional through lane, and the bike lane will also be accommodated, and there will be one deceleration lane leaving Clinton Keith entering onto the site.
Okay. I think that was all the questions that I had at this point. I would assume that these conditions of approval are being met by the group that is developing this project?
Those are the conditions of approval that are applicable to the project. The design review meets those conditions, and the remaining conditions are for the applicant to fulfill as they make their way through the building and grading process.
Okay.
But yes, they will all be complied with.
So the applicant has agreed to these conditions of approval?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Harlan, any comment?
Sure, just a comment upfront, because I think this has been going on for quite a while. So thanks to the staff for, for sticking with this to try and find a solution. I know there's a lot of hours and time has been put in this as well for the applicant, the due diligence that you've done. And I think we all appreciate the public and the passion and getting involved, because on a matter like this, the more viewpoints that you have, the best decision you can make for, for the community and for the city. On that said, walk me through the, the whole process of this hours of operation recommendation again. Five to ten A M. Monday through Sunday. Is there, you know, for example, right, when I look at that immediate area, I got C V S seven to eleven, A M. P M. twenty-four hours. I've got Costco five-thirty to nine-thirty, Monday through Friday, and then Saturday, Sunday, six to eight. I can get my Monster Taco, Jack in the Box, from six to ten P M. But if I go to Del Taco, I can go to seven to one P M. And Jersey Mike's, ten to nine. It just seems like there's a lot of different moving parts there. Is there a, is there a consistent plan or guardrails for hours slated for business within the city? I'm just trying to kind of figure out where that five to ten came from.
Right, so, thank you for the question, and you're correct in your assessment. There were, we did look at the hours of operations in the immediate area and did find the same as your findings. And then we considered the Planning Commission's request and concern about proximity and noise. So we took those hours into account, and then we went to the city, throughout the city, and looked at properties that were adjacent to residential homes. And to provide two specific examples that you may be able to recall that are in the city, on Myriad Hot Springs Road and Jackson Avenue in the Sam's Club Shopping Center or that general area, there is a fast-five express car wash that is located directly on Jackson Avenue and Myriad Hot Springs Road that is immediately adjacent to residential homes. It's similar to this type of setup. And so we looked at what would the hours of operation be for that use? Those were nine to six. So we looked for another example that was a car wash, right? So we looked for another example, and there is a tire store slash minor vehicle tune-up approved. And it is also immediately adjacent to residential homes and similar to this layout. And the hours of operation for that business are eight A M. to six P M. So we saw these hours that were limited in the evening. And so we took these operating hours for businesses that were adjacent to homes. We considered their different uses, one being a car wash, one being automotive repair. We considered the use before us, which is a convenience store. We looked at the commercial uses, like you identified, those were all later hours. The businesses that are immediately adjacent to residential homes, given their uses, those are shorter hours in the evening. So we took those things into consideration, and we felt like ten P M. would be the max that would be appropriate to stay open in the evening. So we came up with five A M. to ten P M. at night.
And, thank you, Aaron. And Commissioner Harlan, I think one other thing that we need to think about is the behavior of consumers. There's been a lot of analysis that when a consumer is going to get gas, they always turn right into the business. You'll never find folks that constantly search for a gas station if there's a convenient one right there. This is the only location that a gas station could go to on that section of Clinton Keith Road. And again, this serves a large suburban neighborhood that gets on the freeway. So that's why the hours are important to discern, is because it, it's a particular peak crowd that needs to get services, if you will, in order to get to work. And so that's part of what we're looking at, was, we know that the, the breakfast crowd, if you will, gets up pretty early. And that's why we were trying to look at the earlier hours, not so much the latter hours.
Got it, thank you. The, were you able to find any data that impacts business revenue and/or traffic by hour? So for example, let's say, the local State of Brothers, right? From six to seven, they know what that percent of revenue is going to be, seven to eight, eight to nine. And accordingly, you schedule labor accordingly to that, right? Got it that we're talking about, okay, you're going to get up early, et cetera. But do we have any kind of data that would help us kind of set and tell that story of, you know, does it make sense to be open from five to six? Does it make sense to be open from six to seven? You've got residents looking for like an eight o'clock opening, right? Is there any data that can show what that shift or what that trend looks like? Does that make sense?
Understood. So in, in our review of the, of the hours of operation, the data associated with revenue was not something that we asked for or considered. It was, we considered the use itself and the customers that would be visiting the business and their likely need for these services at the convenience store.
Got it. Was there any consideration given to, for example, Costco has a Monday through Friday hours, and then they have a Saturday, Sunday hours? Is there any consideration given towards, you know, maybe it's five to ten or six to ten Monday through Friday, and perhaps eight to ten on a Saturday, Sunday? Was any consideration given to potentially split that? Under the paradigm of commuters on a Saturday, Sunday being less, it might even be more beneficial for the business not to be open that early.
And Commissioner Harlan, I'll just interject that there are times where we do look at that succinct economic analysis, and it's usually when an applicant's preparing an environmental impact report. The Costco project, for example, did a leakage analysis, which is to look at the adverse impact upon other surrounding businesses such as landscape companies, coffee shops, gas stations, things like that. But on a project of this scale, we would not ask for such information. But there are certain times where we need an economic analysis to justify. Another point is when you're going to convert, say, commercial to residential, you'd probably want to make sure that, you know, you're losing tax base. And so you do an economic analysis for that type of project. But for a convenience store, I think that rises a little bit too high for the type of permit type that we'd apply it to. But we do do those analyses for certain projects. And usually, it's about urban decay. What you don't want to do is cause other businesses to fail when you're promoting one business. But we feel that there's a lot of competition in this area, if you will, for this business to succeed or not succeed in. But that'll be up to the marketplace and the applicant.
Just given the situation where you had to do kind of a one-off to see what hours would look like throughout the city, is there plans perhaps to kind of come up with a consistency, maybe kind of a process or a standard so that going forward, there's consistency across the, you know, for example, for convenience store, these hours, car wash, those hours? Or is it all kind of based on the particular location?
It, it's based on a multitude of factors, and generally, we listen to the business community and what their needs are. And we try to make that work best within what's being proposed. But there are occasions, site-specific, where hours of operation could be a concern and should be looked at on a case-by-case basis. And we did consider this one for varying hours of the week or weekend. It's just that the use itself as a convenience store, people stop, would, would stop at this facility because for matters of convenience, they're away from home and aren't able to get what they need, and the convenience store is there for them to pop in and out of. And that is a habit that would occur Monday through Sunday, and not necessarily Monday through Friday only, and differently on the weekends.
Thank you, no further questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Harlan. I have no questions for staff either. At, at this point, we can open it up for public comment. If we have any public comment, this will not be public testimony. But if there's any members of the public that would wish to comment, you are welcome to. Madam Secretary, do we have any public comment tonight?
Seeing none.
Okay. Move on from that. I will bring it back to the dais if there's our consensus to make a motion.
I have a certification, a couple of certification questions.
Oh, cancel that. We'll bring it back to the dais for some clarification questions from Vice Chair Fisher.
Based upon this new recommendation, we will still have the underground tanks for the gas station, is that correct?
That is correct.
Uh, but we will not be selling, we will not be selling propane, is that correct?
Correct, there will be no propane sales.
And in alcohol, it'll just be beer and wine?
There will be no alcohol sales.
No alcohol sales at all?
None.
Okay. And we were concerned, on my notes that I have back from the last meetings, we were concerned about the distance from a daycare center. Has that been resolved?
We have identified the location of the daycare center, and it, it does not fall with any buffer separation requirement. So while, while it is something to be aware of, as it is a sensitive use, the project wouldn't have any direct impacts or would be in violation of, of a regulation.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. At this point, I'd like to call for a motion and a second.
I will make my very last motion as a planning commissioner.
That's right.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a notice of exemption pursuant to SEQA and adopt a resolution of the Planning Commission approving Development Plan two thousand and nineteen eighteen forty-six with the limited operating hours and denying the C U P. for two thousand and nineteen eighteen forty-seven and minor C U P. for two thousand and nineteen eighteen fifty-six based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval in Exhibit A.
Thank you, Commissioner Lavelle.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner King. Madam Secretary, may we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Harlan.
Aye.
Commissioner King.
Aye.
Commissioner Lavelle.
Aye.
Vice Chair Fisher.
Aye.
Chair La Paglia.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. City Planner, any comments?
Yeah, forgive me, Commission and members of the audience, in regards to the workshop for the Hillside Policy. Unfortunately, one of our staff had an emergency earlier this afternoon, and we're going to have to cancel tonight's workshop and bring that back in January. I do apologize, I know folks in the audience came out specifically for that, so my apologies for this late cancellation. But back to you, Chair, I just want to make that note for the record.
I appreciate that, Jared, and hope everything's okay with Mr. Tracy and his folks. City Attorney, any comments?
None, thank you.
None. And back to the Planning Commission. Yeah, come on.
Hey, I wanted to congratulate our Commissioner Lavelle. I think he's put in some good time in the boot camp of the P C. here for the last few years. I would like to acknowledge, John, you did a phenomenal job while you were Chair, and especially because we had some pretty heavy projects like Myriad Hill's specific plan amendment, and you carried yourself well, you got through it. And it's really a neat thing to see someone go from your step up to our elected. And so as staff, we congratulate you. You put in a lot of hard work, and just wanted to say that in the public record. But nice knowing you, John, and hopefully you'll remember me in the future.
Thank you. I'll be sure to bring the headaches for you, Jared.
Commissioner King, any comments? None. Commissioner Harlan?
None.
Vice Chair?
Let me, that's why I wasn't, I'm going to, I just want to say thank you to Jared and all the staff here at the city. You guys have made the last four years incredibly easier than it should have been for someone coming into this new. Kind of a strange to say, I, you know, being a commissioner through the pandemic is something I don't think anyone will ever be able to say again. So learning while that was happening was also interesting. I don't think it could have been any easier or better than in this city. So I look forward to working with all of you, continued even the commission. Going forward in this new role, the last four years have been very interesting and, and, and fun for me to learn and be behind this dais. But to my fellow commissioners, good luck, keep up the good work, and I'll, I'll be seeing you on Tuesday nights.
Yeah, yeah, no doubt.
I would just like to say thank you to the staff for this year, for all of the hard work, the extra efforts, the back and forth that you have to do, some of the compensations that you have to do, the compensations you have to do with certain things. You guys are diligent, you are really looking at the city well. And I just want to wish you, the staff, a thank you and a very happy holiday season.
Absolutely. Thanks to staff, thanks to the public for putting in your guys' effort on all this. We, we do appreciate it all. And I'm not good with the mushy stuff, but John, it's, it has been fun for four years, you know, you and I coming on the Planning Commission together. And from getting roasted on our, on our debut to the last four years of the pandemic, and, you know, it's, it's been great, you know, working with you on this level. And congratulations on the, on the City Council position. It's going to be great, I know you did a great job, you're passionate about the city. And as someone that's lived here my whole life, since I was a baby, that's really all I can ask for, is someone that loves our city genuinely and puts it first on the, on the, on the City Council. So thanks for taking the plunge into that, and, and good luck to you.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for your support. I'll, I'll be here if you guys need anything ever, so.
Of course. And at six twenty-eight, six twenty-nine, we will adjourn this hearing.